Their culture and their presence on nourie and continue to nourure this air. La ville d'Atawar rend hommage au peuple et au territoire de la nation Algonkin Anashnabé. Nous témoignons notre gratitude à tous les gens des Premières Nations, les Inuits et les Métis, pour leur précieuse contribution passée et présente à ces terres.
I will now invite everyone to rise if you're able for a moment of personal reflection. Thank you, merci, and please remain standing, and I'll ask councillor Bradley to introduce the performer of our national anthem today.
Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor. It's my pleasure to introduce a talented and accomplished performer to lead us in the singing of Oh Canada this morning. Tammy Leverity Hall is no stranger to City Hall, having performed the anthem here during the tenure of my predecessor Diane Deans. She has also been a cherished part of our office's annual International Women's Day breakfast with her rendition of the anthem, which has always set the perfect tone. Tammy's vocal talents have taken her across North America. She has performed the national anthem for the renowned organizations such as the Los Angeles Dodgers, the Toronto Blue Jays, Ottawa Senators, and the Ottawa Red Blacks. Closer to home, she regularly opens events for her brokerage Royal Le Page Realty, where she has built a successful and award-winning real estate career. Tammy also comes from a family of high achievers. Her father at Leverity was recently inducted into the Canadian Football Hall of Fame as part of the class of 2024, an incredible accomplishment that reflects her family's strong ties to Canadian culture and sports. If you were able, please continue rising and let's and I welcome Tammy to sing the national anthem.
Thank you.
Feel free to join along. Thank you for that lovely introduction, Jessica.
Oh, Canada, our home and native land. True patriot love in all of us command. Quat'om bras et porté le pays, il s'est porté la croix. Ton histoire est une épopée des plus brillants exploits. God keep our land glorious and free. Oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee. Let me hear ya. Oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee. Thank you.
Thank you, Tammy. And while you're here, it seems like every council meeting, somebody is celebrating a birthday, and today is councillor Wilson Low's birthday.
Woo, happy birthday!
Councillor Low, would you mind leading us in at a version of Happy Birthday, please?
Let us do it. And sorry, who's the birthday name?
It's Wilson Low.
Wilson, here we go. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, dear Wilson. Happy birthday to you.
Thank you, Tammy. All right, I will ask the councillor's council coordinator now to do the roll call, please.
Councillor Luloff.
Good morning.
Councillor Dudas.
Present.
Councillor Hill.
Present.
Councillor Currie.
Here.
Councillor Kelly.
Here.
Councillor Gower.
Here.
Councillor Kavanaugh.
Present.
Councillor Johnson.
Here.
Councillor Devine.
Here.
Councillor Bradley.
Here.
Councillor Tierney.
Present.
Councillor Plante.
E.C.
Councillor King.
Here.
Councillor Troster.
Here.
Councillor Leeper.
E.C.
Councillor Brockington.
Here.
Councillor Minari.
Here.
Councillor Carr.
Here.
Councillor Kits.
Here.
Councillor Jeruz.
Here.
Councillor Brown.
Here.
Councillor Girash. Councillor Hubley. Councillor Low.
Here.
Mayor Sackliff.
Here.
Your quay, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Confirmation of minutes from the council meeting on November 13th. Is that carried? Declarations of interest. Councillor Kelly.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, councillor Clark Kelly, declare a potential deemed pecuniary interest on the integrity commissioner's report listed as item 10.1 on the November 27, 2024 city council agenda, in accordance with subsection 5.1 of the Benisible Conflict of Interest Act. As such, I will not be voting on any matters related to the integrity commissioner's report. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Kelly. Any other declarations of interest? I'll note the communications on the agenda. Motion to introduce reports. Councillor Johnson.
That the Built Heritage Committee Report 19, Planning and Housing Committee Report 38, the report from the integrity commissioner entitled Report to Council on an Inquiry respecting the conduct of councillor Kelly, and the report from the city clerk entitled Summary of Oral and Written Public Submissions for Items Subject to the Planning Act. Explanation requirements at the city council meeting of November 13, 2024 be received and considered.
Is that carried? Thank you. Item 10, the integrity commissioner's report. Is that carried? And we'll just note that councillor Kelly, you have to step away from the table for that. Okay. Item 11.1 under Built Heritage is the application to alter the former St. Bridget's Church at 310 St. Patrick Street. Is that carried? For item 11.2, there is a technical amendment, which we can deal with quickly if everybody's okay with that. Councillor Troster.
Thank you so much. Whereas the report ACS 2024 PDB RHU 0063 recommends the issuance of a notice of intention to designate 66 Queen Street under part why am I so tired? Part four of the Ontario Heritage Act, according to the Statement of Cultural Heritage Value attached to Document 5 and. Whereas new information was provided heritage staff following a public delegation at the Built Heritage Committee of November 12, 2024. And whereas the statement of cultural heritage value was updated to reflect this information, therefore be it resolved that the statement of cultural heritage value replace be replaced with the amended document five.
Thank you. Do we need a seven second delay on this broadcast? Anyway.
And for the record, that is because the individual in question noted in the report was not knighted, in case you were wondering.
Okay. On the technical amendment, is that carried? And on the item as amended, is that carried? Item 11.3 is the designation of 66 Queen Street. There is a technical amendment for this as well. Councillor Troster.
You know what? I believe I read the wrong technical amendment. So the previous one was the technical amendment for Queen Street. I sincerely apologize.
Okay.
So we've already read that one. I'm obviously having a day. So may I read the other technical amendment?
So let's, so on the technical amendment that was previously read that applies to this item, is that carried?
Yes, is that carried?
Carried?
Now we'll go back to the previous one.
On 66 Queen Street then, as amended, is that carried?
Carried.
Okay, so let's go back to 11.2 and read the correct technical amendment.
For 152 Metcalf Street?
Yes, please.
Okay. I sincerely apologize. I did not know that this one was being stated as a technical amendment. Whereas the Built Heritage Committee meeting of November 12, 2024, the owners of the property at 152 Metcalf Street requested that the north wing of the church be excluded from the proposed designation. And whereas the exclusion of the north wing of the building does not change the overall evaluation of the property under Regulation 9/06, therefore be it resolved that council approve an amendment to the statement of cultural heritage value attached as document five to ACS 2024-PDB RHU 0079 to include the language. The 1906 north wing of this building is excluded from the designation. Thank you very much, and apologies for the confusion.
Okay, so on the technical amendment, is that carried? And then the item as amended, is that carried? Okay, 11.4 is the motion from conseil plant. Is that carried? Item 12.1 under Plousing Planning and Housing Committee is the development charges reimposition of corporate studies development charge. Is that carried? The bulk consent agenda, is that carried? There are no in-camera items. Motion to adopt reports. Councillor Johnson.
That the Built Heritage Committee Report 19, Planning and Housing Committee Report 38, the report from the integrity commissioner entitled Report to Council on an Inquiry respecting the conduct of councillor Kelly, and the report from the city clerk entitled Summary of Oral and Written Public Submissions for Items Subject to the Planning Act. Explanation requirements at the city council meeting of November 13, 2024 be received and adopted as amended.
Is that carried? Motions of which notice has previously been given. Item 16.1 is the Poppy's and City of Ottawa facilities in 2025 Poppy campaign. Councillor Brockington, did you want to say anything about that or?
Mayor, I think the motion is pretty self-explanatory. It does have the support of the general manager. Happy to take any questions.
Okay, is the item carried? Thank you. There are no motions requiring suspension of the rules of procedure. Notices of motion. Councillor Gower.
Thank you, Mayor. Whereas according to the 2023 State of Ottawa's Health Report from Ottawa Public Health, it is estimated that at least 14% of Ottawa residents or over 150,000 individuals lack access to primary care. And whereas this severe access gap disproportionately affects new Canadians, Indigenous communities, and other vulnerable groups. And whereas a group of, a local group of doctors has submitted an application to the Ministry of Health for provincial operating funding to establish a family health team in Kanata-Stittsville. And whereas the application for provincial funding would be strengthened by securing municipal land for construction of a health hub facility that would host the FHT. And whereas similar health hubs, supported by neighboring municipalities, have demonstrated the ability to attract physicians, registered nurses, and other healthcare professionals, allowing them to quickly scale up primary care access to their communities. And whereas this FHT would deliver comprehensive multidisciplinary care to nearly 50,000 residents across Ottawa in partnership with local physicians, as well as provide access to a range of healthcare professionals, such as nurse practitioners, physiotherapists, pharmacists, system navigators, and mental health workers. Therefore be it resolved that staff be directed to enter into discussions with the Kanata-Stittsville family health team proponents to examine how a portion of the municipal land at 1655 Maple Grove Road could be made available for healthcare use, including land use requirements, applicable laws, regulations, and policies, including the City of Ottawa's disposal of real property policy, and any restrictions under the municipal act, including section 106 related to municipal bonusing, municipal health services, and social services that may benefit from being co-located within the health hub. And therefore be it further resolved that staff report to Finance and Corporate Services Committee no later than Q2 2025 with findings and any recommendations. And therefore be it further resolved that a copy of this motion, once approved by city council, be circulated to the Ontario Minister of Health. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Gower. Councillor Dudas.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Whereas the Heart of Orleans BIA board requested an expansion to the area pursuant to section 210 of the Municipal Act 2020, 2001, before passing a bylaw to expand the boundary of a BIA, the municipality sends notice to the Board of Management, current members, and members in the proposed area. And whereas on September 13, 2023, council approved that the notice of intention to expand the boundaries of the Heart of Orleans, and the notification process was made in accordance with section 210 of Municipal Act 2001. Whereas the city did not receive sufficient objections, and as the notification process was successful, the city may now enact a bylaw to amend the BIA area to include the expanded area, which includes all notified properties, and such map is attached to Schedule A to this motion. And whereas city staff identified a minor administrative error relating to the boundary adjustment map council approved on September 13, 2023, Document 1, based on the property owner mailing list related to the notice of intention letter from the city clerk, the boundary adjustment map that should have been attached to the staff report on September 13, 2023, is attached to Schedule A. Therefore be resolved that the Heart of Orleans bylaw 2006, 476, be amended to include the attached Schedule A expansion area following the successful notification process, and that city staff list such amending bylaw on the agenda of council for enactment.
Thank you, councillor Dudas. Motion to introduce bylaws. Councillor Johnson.
That the bylaws listed on the agenda under motion to introduce bylaws, three readings be read and passed.
Is that carried? Confirmation bylaw, councillor Johnson.
That the following bylaw be read and passed to confirm the proceedings of the council meeting of November 27, 2024.
Is that carried? Inquiries. Councillor Dudas.
Entreging, Mr. Mayor. To provide a fuller understanding of the situation and capacity challenges, can community and social services staff advise what other housing solutions would be required should the federal government not provide the capital request in the proposed newcomer reception system application? Specifically, what alternatives exist to the proposed newcomer reception centers if the federal government does not provide the required funding, or if the existing strategy does not proceed as planned? Considering the anticipated inflow of refugees and asylum seekers will continue, how long would the existing recreation and community centers need to be, continue to be needed if the newcomer reception center facilities are not built? If the newcomer reception center facilities are not built, will additional city facilities need to be repurposed into housing space? And then at the bottom of that, there's an odd little addendum. So forgive me, I don't know if I need to read that portion in.
No, Mr. Mayor, that's just a procedural language in the template. You can disregard that.
Okay, so I'll skip the dry language, and I believe that's the end of the inquiry.
Okay, thank you, councillor Dudas. Are there any other inquiries?
Mr. Mayor, will that one be circulated to council, that inquiry, just so we can check?
The actual inquiry?
Yeah.
Yeah, it can be sent to you, sure.
Thank you.
Okay, any other inquiries? Motion to adjourn, councillor Johnson.
That the proceedings of the city council meeting of November 27, 2024 be adjourned.
Is that carried? Thank you, everyone.
This kind of process, and also, you know, whether you thought that the result of the investigation was appropriate? I think it's important for us to have a code of conduct, to have an integrity commissioner, to have a process like this when a complaint is filed. I, I thought the report was appropriate. I think members of council felt it was appropriate, and everyone was prepared to, to carry the recommendation and, and move on. And my second question is about the latest on the Trillium Line opening. We saw that substantial completion has been approved and that we won't get another substantial update for another week and a half. Now, we had heard that if things went well, it was, could already be open, and it seemed during the testing like everything was going very well. So I wonder for people along that line, you know, what would you have to say to them about the, the fact that this keeps dragging on? I know our, our customers have been very patient, and I appreciate that and respect that. And nobody, you know, nobody wants to wait any longer than necessary to have service available to residents. They've been waiting for a long time. But at the same time, we have to make sure that when we open the service, it's 100% ready, it's 100% safe. We want to make sure we're following all the recommendations of the public inquiry. We're not rushing anything. So, you know, we're getting very close now, and the service will open soon.